Good afternoon, and thank you all for turning out today. This is a workshop to talk about the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction Project along the beach, commonly known as Beach Renourishment. The workshop was set up because several weeks ago, the Board had asked that we have representatives from Florida DEP and from the Army Corps of Engineers to come here and respond to questions that had been raised previously and that may get raised tonight. All of you should have received a copy of the questions that we had until today, which we intend to pose this evening. There are also some five-by-eight cards out there that if you've got a question that isn't on that list, or if you hear something during tonight's presentation that sparks a follow-up, please grab a card, fill it out. Brian Kellenberger, who is sitting over here, will come by. If you hold the card up, he'll come get it and bring it back up to have the question answered. And Brian, you're already on the task there. So, since this is a workshop and not a public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners will be taking no action, no votes tonight. We're listening to gather information. This is not for public comment. We're going to do everything off of the cards and the questions go either to staff, to the Army Corps of Engineers, or to Florida DEP. And with us tonight, we have Mr. Mark Thomason, who is the Director for the Division of Water Management for Florida DEP. And we have David Newell, who's the Project Manager for the Army Corps of Engineers, and Richard Allen, who is the Coastal Engineer for the Army Corps of Engineer. Also, we have Brad Pickle, who is representing the TDC from the standpoint of the technical aspects, and Jim Bagby, who is our TDC Director. Mr. Bagby will be taking the cards and asking the questions and directing them. At the end of the questions I will ask, were there any questions that were submitted that didn't get asked, so that we make sure that everybody's question got answered? But as I mentioned, this is not a public comment session. This is an opportunity to do what we asked previously, which is to ask questions of the DEP and Army Corps of Engineers. So with that, Mr. Bagby, if you will go ahead and start with what we've got on hand, and also, Mr. Kellenberger, if you'll be aware that if somebody's got a question, please go ahead and retrieve it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, if you want to, it'd probably be easier if you just stand up there as opposed to pull up the mic, since you're first in the barrel, and we'll go down the list of questions that have been submitted prior. The first question that was submitted was, has any entity applied for the establishment of an erosion control line?
And before we, we're going to put a two-hour time limit on this, so if at 6:00, this looks like it's going to be lengthy, we're going to call the meeting at that point in time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The short answer is no. We've received from the county a mean-high water survey that was conducted in coordination with preparation for the project and doing the project survey. But there's a rather lengthy 25-step checklist that we have put together that require, for the requirements for the establishment of an ECL. And item number one on that checklist is a local resolution, and we have not received a local resolution yet.
Okay. The next question is, what are the steps necessary to establish an erosion control line?
And I'll try to summarize those steps for you. A local resolution, as I said, is the first step, requesting establishment of a erosion control line. There needs to be a mean-high water survey, and there's a lot of substeps to that, and that's coordination with our Division of State Lands, Office of Surveying and Mapping, and those kinds of things. And there needs to be a public workshop conducted on that proposed ECL. There needs to be a public hearing on the ECL. Then that ECL needs to be after a comment period, after that public hearing and a chance to address those questions. That, the proposed ECL needs to go to the Board of Trustees, and they have to approve it, and it has to be recorded in the local clerk of court for the county in which the project is in.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up, please. In reference to the public workshop and the public hearing that you just mentioned, is that something the local does, or is this something FD, uh, DEP does?
We do that in coordination with the local sponsor, and DEP will supply a hearing officer for that public hearing.
As a follow-up to that question, is that located on your website anywhere that people can pull down the 25 steps?
Unfortunately, it's not. I can make a copy available to you. As a matter of fact, the copy I brought with me, I can leave, and we can make an electronic version available.
Okay. Can an erosion control line be established if I do not sign an easement, as it was in 2006 in western Walton County?
Yes, an erosion control line can be established independent of an upland easement. And I want to make sure that it's, we separate two items. An erosion control line separates the ownership between the state, which owns the sovereign submerged lands, and the upland property, which is privately held. And so, we can do work on the state-owned submerged lands without an easement from the upland property owner. So any, but any work done, upland of the mean-high water would need an easement from the property owner. So that's why an ECL can be established, because there can be work in the near shore done without an upland easement.
Okay. The, is there a process whereby an owner can either not get any sand or pay for their own sand so as to prevent the establishment of an ECL?
The, DEP is a regulatory agency. We review a project request. So we have a project request in front of us where the Corps of Engineers has made an application. Should a property not want to be, or a landowner not want to be included in that project, they would need to go to the project sponsor, you guys, and the Corps, and ask to be removed from the project. And then if that application were then submitted to the state to say, hey, our project has changed, it no longer includes these projects, we would then review that in accordance with our statutes and rules to make sure it met those rules. So, the process is not a state process. It would be with the Corps and with the local sponsor.
And just as an aside, because three of the questions we've gotten so far are on the list, I would ask, the questions are on both sides of the paper, so if you'd read both sides, that way we don't double-tap on questions. The next question is, what standards, from your perspective, would lead you to recommend a property or properties be excluded from the project?
Just to be clear, I want to make sure, we wouldn't recommend a project be included or excluded. We would review a request, and we would determine whether or not that inclusion or exclusion met the rules and statutes that we have. With that said, in general, those rules and statutes speak to whether or not it's a sustainable project, whether or not it will impact any environmental resources, whether or not it will cause damage to adjacent properties, and I think that's it. I mean, in general, you know, with those rules. So sustainability, damage, and whether or not it would cause damage to adjacent properties or environmental resources.
How much has the state spent on the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction Project so far?
Okay. To date, we've spent about $900,000 on that project. It is a cost-share project, and I believe the Corps will answer how much they've spent on it, and so will a representative of you guys, Mr. Pickle, so.
Okay. Thanks. We've got a couple of questions that will, on the follow-on, that we'll do. David, you want to, you ready to do the Corps?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. The first Corps question was, during what hours in a day does the construction occur?
Our contractors typically work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including holidays. In fact, the majority of our contractors even work on Christmas.
How noisy is the construction work when placing the fill sand on the beach?
The construction work is extremely noisy. Typically, there are two to three very large bulldozers running non-stop with backup alarms beeping all night long. There's no way to reduce or mitigate this noise.
How many feet per day will be completed?
Production's going to depend on what size dredge the contractor owns, who's performing the work. It'll depend on where in the project, how much berm and dune is being constructed, but we typically see somewhere between 500 to 1,000-foot of construction per day.
Some areas of the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction Project appear to be outside the areas deemed critically eroded by the state. Are there any limits to the areas that can be included in the project, or do they have to abut critically eroded areas?
They do not have to abut critically eroded areas. In our economic analysis, we do not attempt to correlate reaches that are economically feasible with those that the FD EP has designated as critically eroded. Our project is based off the value of the infrastructure related to the construction. It's a hurricane and storm damage reduction project.
What standards, from your perspective, would lead you to recommend a property or properties be excluded from the project?
In determining what portion of the project that we construct, that portion must be environmentally and structurally sound, sustainable, and economically justifiable.
How much has the federal government spent on the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction Project so far?
In order to complete the feasibility study and the environmental assessment, there were about $2 million federal funds spent. So far, in this phase, being the pre-construction, engineering, and design phase, we have spent approximately $400,000 federal.
Has the Corps ever reneged on putting additional sand on a federal project after a storm where sand was lost?
The Corps requires authority and funding to do a project. In short, we do what the President or Congress tells us to do.
What research has been done to ensure the sand is compatible with our beaches?
I'm going to, at this time, I'll hand it over to Richard, who can better answer these questions.
The research for the sand compatibility, we started out with a general investigation covering the entire offshore area of Walton County, looking at 10 specific sites. Within those sites, we identified one single site that we felt was the most viable option. Within that site, we then took 99 vibrocord samples, which is essentially take like a four- or five-inch PVC pipe and drive it about 20 feet into the ground, and then you recover a sample 20-foot long that you can then take and analyze that sample physically for, you know, sand grain size, set shell content, color, silk content, all those different perspectives. We also performed a seismic survey, which is essentially a density investigation of the, of the subsoul there. And of that, let's see, and we also did 314 samples on the existing beach for the native fill to make sure that what we had offshore and what we were trying to meet onshore were identical.
Will there be shells with the sand, and what steps will the county take, or the Corps, if any, to remove the shells?
The short answer is yes. Shell will be in our sand that we put on the beach. The shell content is going to be anywhere between 2% to 2.5%, which is well below what FD EP requires. FD EP requires 5%, less than 5%. That's not to say that there won't be pockets that could have potentially more shells than that 5%. If that were to happen, we have put in a QAQC report that we will follow, that we've submitted with FD EP per their requirements, that we will mitigate any of those issues where we have excessive shell content.
What is the size and texture of the sand that is proposed to be used?
In the bore area that we have, we've located one specific area within that bore area that we're going to use for our initial fill placement. And the mean grain size within that bore area is 0.29 millimeters. The native beach fill material is .27 to .34 millimeters. So we're right in the middle there at .29 millimeters.
How is it different from upland sand?
I really can't speak to the upland sand. I don't have any information on that, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
What is the color of the sand that is proposed to be used?
Based on our investigations of the bore area, using the Muncil Color Value System, it's a Y5, excuse me, 5Y72 and 62.
Has an environmental impact study been done for this project?
There has not been an environmental impact study. There has only been an environmental assessment, and of that, it was found, a Fonzie was signed in July 26, 2013.
Okay. As a follow-on, can, as soon as the phone goes off here. Can you confirm that an environmental impact study is not required if the environmental assessment doesn't trigger it?
Correct. An environmental assessment is kind of the first-line step. It's the reconnaissance of the environmental aspects. And if an environmental assessment comes back as no significant findings, then there's no need for an environmental impact study to be performed.
Will the project impact coastal Dune Lake outfalls?
We are not anticipating any outfall impacts. We have utilized a report by Browder and Dean, which seems to be a good basis for the status of the Dune Lake outfalls. Based on that, we defined a sweep area using historic Dune Lake outfalls that we can find through aerial imagery. We also overlaid a LiDAR imagery, which is kind of the elevation data for the area. Within that, we've identified the eight-foot contour as being that sweep area, and we tried to maintain our template outside of that area. In some places, we do fall within that sweep area, but in those areas is places where there's already been development, which is, you know, we're no longer going to have the sweep area come into that area, or things of that nature.
I've got a question. It's a follow-up to one of your comments, and maybe, Brad, you might want to be able to answer this. I know you said that 2.5% was the shell content roughly that we're looking at. Brad, you may have some information. What's our current dry beach area content for shell?
Less than half a percent is what we would estimate.
Thank you very much.
I guess I'll take the first one.
Right.
We skipped one.
Well, no, we, this is, he's answering this one. This is his first one. We had it misplaced. So, will the sand be tested to see if there are any BP-related contaminants?
Yes, the sand's already been tested. You all approved that work, and it has been conducted by Taylor Engineering, funded through NERDA dollars. All of the sand was, through grab samples, was tested for contaminants. No contaminants were found. In addition, they also did other work throughout the offshore areas and didn't find any contaminants. So that work's already been conducted.
Where's the sand coming from?
And this is a graphic I want to show you up on the screens, kind of walk you through it, a couple of different things. This line, can you see where the plus is? This line is Okaloosa County. The Okaloosa County line over here is the Walton County line. As Richard said, there were 10 sites investigated. These are a number of those sites. Here are some of the bigger ones that were further investigated. But the reality of the situation was, after all the work was done, we focused in on this site. This square is Borrow Area 4. Of Borrow Area 4, there's a subsection called 4A that's being utilized, and that's where the information was given by Richard. It's, so in essence, it's offshore of Sandeston, western Walton County, approximately five miles on the landwardmost portion, so up in this area would be about five miles off, and then it goes a little bit further offshore. I want to clarify something. I was giving out inaccurate information. I thought that they had used this area for the West Eston project. Thanks to some of our homeowners, I have been corrected that they actually used the site west of East Pass. So, so when I was saying, go to Jetty East to look at the sand we would be using, we thought it was this feature. However, it's not. The good news is, the sand we're using is better than the sand that they used west of East Pass. So while it's not the exact same sand, it's actually, as far as the geologic, the grain size, the color, the silk content, and carbonates, is actually lower than what's been used in other Panhandle projects.
Okay. Has the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction been funded by Congress yet?
As David pointed out, all the current phases have been, reconnaissance phase, feasibility phase, and the preliminary engineering design phase, which we're in the middle of right now, have all been fully funded by Congress to the Mobile District. And with that, all local dollars have been matched. We have not yet received federal funding for construction because we haven't gotten to the construction phase. But monies have been requested for both the federal and the state funding for that project.
What communications are planned with beachfront property owners? I guess I can answer that question. If you approve the easement language, the plan is to send a letter out accompanying that easement language, letting them know that this session is available for review if they have some questions. Also, they can direct any of their questions to myself or Brad at the TDC, and we will make sure they get to either the Corps or the FD EP, depending on who is the responsible agency to answer that question. And that, that will be the primary communication, is with those folks identified by the title company as having the authority to sign the easement or not sign the easement. And the website. I thought I said the website.
Brad, let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I got a update from Marlowe and Company, our lobbyists in, in
Yes, sir.
DC, and they were talking specifically about this shore protection project. Could possibly be included in the President's fiscal year 16 or 17 budget recommendation. If not, apparently they've given the Corps additional funds so they could use those monies as unallocated to be done. So, it looks like the earliest is fiscal year 16.
Which begins in October of 2015.
2015, okay. So then on the same cycle we are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
How much has the county spent on the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction Project so far?
Approximately $1.1 million for the feasibility study. Zero on the reconnaissance study, $1.1 million on the feasibility study, and so far in the PED phase, about $350,000.
Clarify where that, when you say county spent, where did that money come from?
It comes, I'm thinking, it comes from bed taxes collected, tourist, obviously taxes collected for lodging less than six months here in Walton County. So it comes from the tourists, and it's dedicated for beach nourishment. It was the third scent that was passed in 1998, late 98, and began collecting in 1999. And that's been the local funding source for all of these beach projects since that point.
Has the property been given away for allowing them not to have to participate in this project?
No.
Let me ask a question on that. You know, I noticed that Watersound is not, is not, is it that they're not eligible for the project, or why is, why are we not including Watersound?
Since that was a decision based on economic justifiableness, I would like to turn it over to the Corps, just to let David address why certain areas were left out.
Okay. But then, and that goes back to the That goes back to the discussion on how we view a project. For us, there's, we assign a value to the infrastructure and in the cost of construction, constructing those beaches. And if the project does not meet, is not justifiable, in other words, it's not greater than a one-to-one ratio in particular, we're, we're not authorized to federally use those funds to build that beach, use it on the federal side.
Is it, is there a distance that is, like, if you're further than a certain distance from the mainhead water line, are you, are you not eligible for the project?
If you're a further
If there's no, if there's no construction within a certain distance of the mainhead water, are you then not eligible? Like, in other words, if the storm came, they're, they're so far back from the beach, is that what you're saying? Is the damages not there?
Right. There wouldn't be enough damages to allow us, there's not enough damages created that would qualify for us building the beach in that area.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, there are only two sections like that. Watersound, which is roughly 600 feet plus or minus to habitable structures. The other one would be Sanctuary by the Sea. Bannerman Beach Lane, for those of you familiar with that area, in between Big Redfish, Little Redfish Lake, similar situation. Through the modeling that was done over the 50-year period, it's not estimated that the structures would be at risk for any damages. So there would no be, be zero benefit to cost, and so it's going to be a negative BC ratio. Those are the only two areas outside of state parks. State parks, similar situation, no infrastructure at risk. Mr. Bagby?
Okay. Can the BCC approve the easement language with the condition that the TDC bring it back to the BCC for a vote on the local resolution, once the BCC sees how many easements have been signed, to determine if the project is even feasible?
Yes, absolutely.
How old is the mean-high water line survey?
As was mentioned by Mr. Thomason, it was done at the same time as the surveying for the project permitting, which was October of 2013. So that'd be 14 months.
Were previous BCCs aware of this project, and did they approve it?
It's funny, after answering all these questions, but seriously, I almost want to be silly on this one. Yes, they have been. I've been working on it and standing before multiple ones of you all in different terms at different times for 14 years. For 12 years, we've been talking about this project. It's been approved at the recon phase, the feasibility phase, also was recently approved at the PED phase. And three of the commissioners came and joined me in Washington DC when we gave the presentation to the Civil Works Review Board. It's been approved at the recon phase, the feasibility phase. Also, was recently approved at the PED phase. And three of the commissioners came and joined me in Washington DC when we gave the presentation to the Civil Works Review Board. So, it has been out there a substantial amount.
Will the hurricane-storm damage reduction project impact my insurance rates?
Not that we're aware of. We don't know of any reduction in rates. Definitely not an increase, but definitely not a, we have not heard of any projects getting a reduction.
What is the latest cost estimate for the project, and what amounts, percentages will be paid for by the county, the state, and the federal government?
The project is currently set up to be 28% federal cost, 16.8% state, 55.2% for the local share. This will be, the amount of funding that each one will be paying is going to be based on us receiving grants from the state. That's going to be a big part of it. We're working with Mr. Thomason's office to try to become grant-eligible, and we think we will be. But current, the last estimate that we have been working from is approximately 61 million. It's 61,397,000 is the overall project cost. If you use those percentages on that number, the federal share would be 17, 191, 160. The state share would be 10,301,937. And the local share, paid for through bed taxes for tourist, for beach nourishment, would be 33,903,903. As I said, the overall project cost will depend on what the project is that gets built and when it gets built. But the percentages, we expect to stay roughly the same, especially the federal share at 28%. The one thing that can flex is the state-local share. But the federal will be 28.
Can you confirm that not a single penny of property taxes will be used for the construction of this project?
I cannot. But currently to date, all the funding for this project that have gone in outward areas, outside areas, have definitely been through the bed taxes. But however, there is admin time. Mr. Jones' time and other people in county administration staff, that would be outside of, of our bed taxes. However, no ad valorem taxes. If we could just zero in on ad valorem taxes, no, at zero ad valorem taxes are expected to be used as part of paying for this project. We anticipate the non-federal share to be covered through beach nourishment reserves that already exist, beach nourishment future collections that would be coming, and then also a loan, if necessary, be pledged against future beach nourishment funds. There also are additional funds in the reserves for the TDC overall. So, those areas would be exhausted first. But as of this time, there's no movement for ad valorem taxes or special taxing districts, all through beach nourishment or bed taxes.
Okay. The next question's going to be answered by Mark from FDEP. And we're, we're into the five-eight cards. Like I said, several of these have already been answered, but we'll, we'll go ahead and re-answer them with, off the cards. So, Mark, do you have all your cards that we've given you?
I have a handful.
We've got the last question.
Well, he's going, he's going to answer the last question. I'm sorry. What property rights are given up or gained by the establishment of an erosion control line, and by whom?
That's a great question. I'm not a property rights expert, but I'll give you my understanding of it. The, what the erosion control line does is it, is it sets in place the current mean-high water or the current separation in property between private ownership and state ownership. What that, what that does, though, is it gives up for a state owner, for, for a private owner, for instance, they lose accretion. So, that, that, that property line will no longer move seaward through accretion. It's, it's stationary. But they gain property loss due to erosion or evulsive events. So, if, if there's a big storm that comes back and it, you know, erodes the beach landward of the ECL, well, that's still their property. You know, they, they maintain out to the ECL the ownership. So, there's a, there's a give and there's a take on both sides. I'll also say that Florida statutes is very clear is that the property owners do not give up any of their, their repairing rights. They maintain their repairing rights out to the water. So, even though a, an ECL is set, they still maintain their repairing rights across the property seaward of the ECL.
Don't go away. I've, I've got a question that, because if my understanding is correct, you set the ECL before anything is done. And part of this project is to enhance the height of the dunes? And when you enhance the height of the dunes, that will cause some of the dunes to creep seaward? So, that in effect, would, that would reduce the amount of surface area for, let's say, recreational purposes that would be available to the property owners? Because once the ECL line is set, any new dune structure east will reduce to some extent their property available for recreation or whatever the term would be?
So, if I'm understanding your question correctly, are you asking that, is it possible if the, the area of property between the ECL and the dune would get smaller?
Yes.
I, I, I don't know. I understand that they're looking to set a, a dune at an elevation, I think 15 is the right, is that the correct? 15. And so, and it's going to vary along the entire stretch of the project. I think the project design has that dune kind of being a, kind of a, a stabilizing feature along the beach, protect property. A dune also is a feeder sand. It provides some sand to the beach system. I can't answer. I don't know if it will or won't. Is it possible? It's possible it will. It's possible it'll increase the area as well. So, I, I just don't know.
Can't use the dunes for recreation?
No, but the, the, what I was referring to is the area from the toe of the dune seaward is, they can volleyball or whatever it's used for. But if by increasing the height of the dune, the natural shape of the dune is going to, it would appear, creep seaward possibly.
Yeah, it, it'll, it'll equilibriate, you know, some. So, you want me to read?
Yeah. If you can read the, if you can read the five-eight card questions?
I'm sorry. But, but along that line, you're adding the sand in the, in the water. So, you're extending the beach. Is that what you're?
No, no. Because where I was referring to was the ECL line, which is now, which once gets established to said, this is the state's and this is the property owners. Since the dune is on the property owner's property, and you're enhancing the dune, does, does any creeping of that dune seaward, it causes at least
A reduction in the flat beach.
A reduction in the property owner's surface area for recreation?
Flat beach. Okay, I got you. Okay. Okay.
That's correct. And so, and that would be between the toe of the dune and the ECL. And as Commissioner Mattos pointed out, there's still even more beach seaward of the ECL on which to recreate. So, would you like for me to just read the question that I received?
Sure, please.
Okay. So, the first question I received was, is the ECL location negotiable? And so, I was at my computer doing some research. I wanted to make sure I, I, I. And, and so, the statute, 161 dot 161 per n5, gives us what, how we set an ECL. And it's, it's guided by the existing line of mean-high water, the extent to which erosion or evulsion has occurred, and the need to protect the existing ownership as much as, of, of as much upland as possible. And so, that's what we base it on. So, is there a room in there for interpretation? There certainly is. I don't like to use the term negotiate, but, because I think as, as a scientist, we have to come to an understanding as to what the answer is. And it's not just a, a split-the-middle kind of thing. But yes, we have to, there is some subjectivity to, to where that line is set. I was waiting for the next question. Realizing I'm, I'm in control here.
Yeah.
The next question. Water Sound Beach area is not a, a part of the project, as, as was discussed. Will an ECL be established along the Water Sound Beach? And will any sand be placed seaward of the ECL if it is created there? My understanding is there's no proposal to place sand waterward along that stretch. And as far as will an ECL be established, we haven't received a, a request to establish an ECL there. So, we'd have to review any request for an ECL and, and decide if it was appropriate or not. So, I, it's hard for me to answer that question right now. And, and I'll go back to say that because an ECL is, is needed in a, along an area of beach that will be benefited by this project. And so, one of my next questions is if one property, you know, opts out, will they establish an ECL? And the short answer is, that's a case-by-case decision based on will the property benefit by placement of sand by the project? And so, that's, that's, again, I, I just can't say yes or no to that. This question has a little bit of an introduction. It says, allow an ECL be established after an easement vote is submitted, then establish the ECL only for the beach stretch that wants it. Is that, you know, the question mark, as in, is that possible? And so, I, you know, that's a matter of, of how you guys proceed with the project. I think Mr. Pickle alluded to the fact that that would, would be an option to see where the project's going to go, then submit the ECL request for that. The next two, there were two on this card. Allow those that wish to accrete through nature to do so without an ECL and eliminate concern of public intrusion. I'm sorry, that was a statement, not a There was a question mark at the end of it. And again, that would, again, though, that would determine you guys's, what you want to include along with the Corps in the project, what you would not want to include. Which leads me to the next question. If we refuse to sign and give our okay, can the state or someone else tell us, it doesn't matter that, and we are going on your property with or without your okay? And I'm paraphrasing the question because some grammatical issues. So, basically, the question is, if they don't sign, can somebody go on the property without their okay? Again, I'm, I'm not a, a lawyer, but from our permitting standpoint, we require, we require the owner's permission to go on the property. As part of a, typically, as part of one of these permits, it's a notice-to proceed item that all easements are in place. There's another option, which you guys are aware of, to get requirements, go on the property, and that's through an eminent domain process. Those are the only two options that I know that are available. The third option is not a legal one, so I wouldn't even recommend it. And the final question that I currently have is, if one's property is not included in the project's original design, will an ECL be established and recorded? The answer to that is, if you're talking about the project that is submitted to us today as the original design, my answer would be that the, the ECL would most likely go from, you know, one end of the project to the other. And so, but if you're not included in that, and, and keeping in mind what I said about the, the water sound area, that we'd have to look at it, then if you're outside of that limit, then there wouldn't be an ECL.
But if you're in the project, you basically, that you're, there, there's going to be an ECL.
Because currently, there are no exclusions. And so, that's, but if, so, let's just go to the other, the hypothetical. Let's just say your, your property's in that limit, you know, east to west. And one property says, I'm not going to do this. You guys agree, and it's taken out of the project. Question, will an ECL be established? And that's going to be on a case-by-case, you know, due to the stuff I mentioned to you earlier. You know, does it benefit from the project? How wide of a gap? Do they need sand placed nearshore or on the wet beach for constructibility issues? A lot of times, you know, they place the sand by pumping the sand to the beach, and they extend a pipeline a half-mile in one direction. And if you don't have that sand placed on that wet beach, you can't lay the pipeline because there's nowhere to lay it. So, there's a lot of considerations that go into will an ECL be established? And will sand be placed, you know, seaward of that during the project?
Okay. Yep. Thanks. The, I'll go ahead and let, I think the Corps has a few cards, and then we'll go to Brad. And then I have a few cards, and then we'll go back through the rotation.
We'll start with this one. What is the Muncil color of native sand? And how does the color of native sand compare to proposed fill sand? The Muncil color of the native sand, as determined from the 300 and something odd samples that we collected of the native beach, came to a 5Y8-1. As previously indicated, the fill material was a 7/2, so.
What does the, what does the eight, you said 8-1?
Eight, 8/1. Eight one.
And so, what is the one number? What does that number, the second number in there mean?
I am not a, a geotechnical engineer. So, I'm not very versed in what the Muncil, how the Muncil color system works. I know the higher the numbers, it's the, the wider the sand gets.
Okay.
And that's the extent of my geotechnical experience.
Well, and we can find, we can get a geotechnical to tell us. I just wondered what that second number was. Okay.
Sure. The next question was, who conducted the Muncil color grading of the fill sand and native sand? What are their qualifications to do the grading? Taylor Engineering conducted all the sampling. I can't speak to their exact qualifications, but I know that they are a well-respected firm in the region.
And if I could add to that? Sorry. If I could add to that. They also contracted a geologist, Greg Stone, with Louisiana State University, was involved in all of our sand sources investigation back during this time period. So, it wasn't just Taylor Engineering. Professional PhD doctor at LSU.
If property owners owning 3,000 linear feet don't sign easements, will that change the viability of the project or at least in that area? I really can't answer that question for any one specific area. It's all going to be very site-specific. One 3,000-foot area could be. One 3,000-area might not be. It's all going to depend on that exact situation.
So, if we, if we came to you and presented you with, say, okay, we have these easements for this section and these easements for this section, but not for this and not for that, you could sit down and look at it, and then come back to us and say, we have a feasible project here, but not here and here. You could, you would evaluate it and tell us if there was a feasible stretch?
Right.
Okay.
Based on what easements we have.
And also, based off the conditions at that particular site, we may have one 1,500-foot stretch that we, that you'd had to establish an ECL, whereas another 1,500-foot section, just as an example, that we did not. So, it's really going to be very site-specific. And we won't know that until we've had a chance to look at the easements, look at the project, and look at what we're able to do.
Okay.
Exactly. Recent surveys show our Mean High Water Line is out in the water. I'm assuming that this is based on the FDEP permit drawings for this question. And the answer to that is, the aerial imagery that was used in the FDEP drawings was from 2010. And so, what that shows might not be representative of what you have today. It's also, it's a, it's a geo-referenced image on top of, of the drawing. So, the, the geo-referencing might not be exact. It's more of a general idea to give you an idea of where you are on the project. Next question. Can you work landward of Mean High Water Line without written permission of property owner? And the simple answer to that is no.
So, and you can't do, you can't go somewhere and, and put sand seaward and then not put, so you can't do kind of half a project? You can't do, do stuff seaward and not do the upland? You have, the, the Corps requires you to do the upland if you're going to do the, is that correct?
It's, it's based on our, our authority that we've been given by Congress for a hurricane and storm damage reduction project. By placing sand in the nearshore area, we're not providing that storm damage protection as we would with a dune. And that's the primary purpose, is storm damage reduction.
Okay. Thank you. That helps. Thank you.
Final question I have here so far is, what happens to the hundreds of artificial reefs located in the sand collection areas? Many are uncharted. We have done extensive surveys of the area, both magnetometer surveys, which basically it's a, a big metal detector that we've taken out there and done surveys of any kind of metal that's out there. We've also done very detailed bathymetric surveys. And so any of those obstructions we have identified, those will be conveyed to the contractor, and the contractor will be told to mitigate those as he deems necessary.
I got to get through some of these real quick. I'll start with the last one. Will the public meetings referred to by DEP be held and noticed locally? I'm assuming that's about the public workshop and public hearing for the ECL line. The answer is yes. We have to publicly notice that locally and also through the Florida Administrative Code. And yes, they will be noticed locally, and also the affected property owners are noticed. So there is public noticing that will be done. And it is held locally, as Mr. Thomason said, they provide a hearing officer and work with us on the presentation.
Is that notification, is that certified mail?
For the ECL, I don't think it is.
Do you know, is property notification by, of the ECL or anything else, is that by certified? I thought I read where it was certified mail.
I know all the easements are certified mail, so thank you, Mark.
Okay, so the, so the people will receive a certified, certified mail about the signing and easing, basically. Is that what you're saying?
They will be noticed, yes, if it's certified mail. I'm not, yeah, we will follow the guidelines of the state, and it sounds like that would be it, yes. When will the 10-year comprehensive funding plan be completed? Will this be before the easements are executed? I am unaware of any 10-year comp plan requirement, comprehensive funding plan requirement. I believe there is credit, however, given by the DEP if a community has one as part of the grant process. The grant process for the state, I'll try to simplify it, Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but in essence, the state legislature allocates a pot of money after the DEP ranks projects. And then they say they allocate $30 million, they go down their list of rankings. And to get higher on the list of rankings, you want to secure more points. And so there's different criteria that you get points for. One of the point, one of the areas that you can get additional points for is a comprehensive 10-year funding plan. However, it's not a requirement by permit of DEP, nor is it a requirement by our partners at the Corps of Engineers.
Brad, one, one quick correction. You mentioned allocated a pot of money. The legislature typically funds specific projects instead of a pot of money.
Right. That's better. Sorry. Thank you for that.
Sure.
I like to say pot of money because we want a lot of money. In sand testing, we're talking about the offshore samples I mentioned, that Taylor Engineering done sand testing. Was it tested specifically for Correxit nanoparticles which have been found in the Gulf? No, at the time, they followed the DEP and the BP testing protocol, and so it was tested for hydrocarbons, polyaromatic hydrocarbons, and about a dozen other compounds. Why are we looking at doing this project now when our beaches are wider and more beautiful than ever? I would only hope that they remain wider and more beautiful than ever. However, we see that in Walton County, we get hit by a storm about every 10 years. That's the facts. I don't know how else to describe that. I can say it as passionately or impassionately as you'd like to hear it. We can list them off. Those of you that have been here for 40 years see every 10 years, and if you don't think we're not looking at 2015, we are. It's not a scare tactic, it's reality. So it's a question of if for when. Do you want another 30 cubic yards per feet of beach or more in front of your property to protect you in the next storm or not? That's a decision that an individual homeowner has to make with the support of the county commission. So from a coastal engineering perspective, all the work's been done. Yes, they look great. They're still extremely low. They're not even five feet high. If they were even five feet high, we wouldn't even have to do this project in a lot of areas, because that's what we're raising the beach up to. Five feet is nothing. Two-foot, three-foot storm surge, you're overtopping a five-feet beach, now it's chipping away at the toe of the dune, and it's falling down. It's really a personal decision. The last question I had, would the proposed sand meet the legal requirement that the county require property owners in building seawalls? I cannot speak specifically to the legal requirement, however, I can to the sand color ordinance. My understanding, based on information just provided to me, is that the color ordinance is 8-1 dry. The sand, as they pointed out, is 7-2. All those samples were wet. We typically have seen within the first year, sand lighten up a shade. Can I guarantee today that the sand's going to lighten up a shade? No. Will I? No. But we have all expectation that the sand's going to lighten up. The sand, when we did western Walton County, had some areas that were sevens, and as soon as it came out of the pipe, within a couple of months, it was white as could be. So can't, can't tell you when or if it's going to, but it does not meet 8-1, except in about 10% of the samples, I think. Based on the first speaker, an owner can deny granting an easement, and yet, re-nourishment could still be done in front, in front of their upland property, true or false? I think it's been described that you can work offshore, however, so it could be done, but I think also the Corps of Engineers have said that that would not meet their economic justification for storm damage reduction, which is the purpose of this project. So while something could be done, they will not support it. If they don't support it, as a federal project, it doesn't happen.
I'm sorry, I'm going to take about three questions, and then we'll go back to FDEP. The 15-foot dune size is measured from what point? And that is sea level, NAVD 88 is the exact space, so it's 15 feet above that. A lot of folks have thought that it was 15 foot above the existing beach or above the existing dune that's, that is in front of their house or their property. It's 15 feet above sea level. So the highest that I've seen in the cross-sections is about five feet above, where there is no dune, you know, no dune that it ties into, where there's a little up, and I think that was in one or two, but most of them just tie into the dune or right at the level of the dune in their house. When dealing with owners, association, or multifamily dwellings, is the easement agreement signed or approved by the owners or the board of directors on the owner's behalf? That is up to each individual property's governing documents. There's no way, I know what Rosemary Beach's governing documents say, but I couldn't tell you what any other multifamily or homeowners association says in the county. And then the next question, was this project initiated by people actually living on the waterfront? Actually, it was, there were people asking for this that lived on the waterfront. You have to remember, this project has been going on for 12 years, 14 years? 12 years. So people, and you can reference the '06, '07, the biggest proponents of the re-nourishment project in western Walton County were the folks that lost all their sand in '04 and '05 and watched their beach float away. And did the homeowners, how many homeowners along the beach have requested this project? There's actually two questions that are similar to that. There's been several that are supportive. Most of the homeowners associations and individual property owners that I've talked to in Miramar Beach, not all of them, but most of them, of course, it's easy there because there's already an established erosion control line, are in support. Most of the big properties developments are in support because they understand it's an access issue. They don't have necessarily the problems that somebody living right next to a neighborhood beach access would have or perceive to have with people coming down that access. But do I have a count, or have I, do I know exactly how many? No. I think most, most of the comments that I have received or been forwarded to me that were against the project center around Blue Mountain Beach and a segment of inland beach. But there, there are people on both sides, and there are still, believe it or not, folks that are undecided on this issue. One of the first questions, which I thought we answered when we answered the shells, but can you assure owners the sand will not look like the pictures attached? Will we have white sand shell and rock free? Our beach today is not white shell or rock free, but it has been cleaned. One of the things going and talking to a lot of the property owners, particularly in the Miramar Beach area, where we already have an erosion control line established, is since there's 200 to 300 feet of public beach out in front of my property, are you going to start cleaning that? And I never thought about that until about the third homeowners group that I talked to, and I think honestly, that's something we need to look at. And so we will probably be adding that into the budget next year, either contracting to clean that segment of the beach that's owned by the state, or getting our own equipment and training. And that equipment could also be used to clean the shells out of the beach. I think we can till the beach, and I think we can do the sand, I call it the sandman treatment, on the beach and get the majority of shells, but like I said, our beaches are not shell-free today. So that's, I guess, the answer to that question. And I will turn it back over to the FDEP and go through these, all these new cards.
I need some help interpreting a question.
Okay, I'll read the question the best I can. What effect will the previously established ECL have on this project? So the ECL in the western end of Walton, that's what he says.
Okay. The, trying to understand the question, because there's an ECL, there will not be a need to establish an ECL. And so that ECL will be honored for this project. I guess I'm trying to wonder, is there like a connectivity issue? I don't understand the question. Somebody, can somebody clarify the question?
Well, there is a, there is an ECL in western Walton County.
Right.
And, and the way I read this question is, that ECL isn't going to be affected of all, at all. It's going to be exactly where it is today.
It stays where it is.
Okay, and so that's, there is no effect.
But what effect will it have on this project?
Zero.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Okay, that, that was, I mean...
And I would agree with that, by the way. I mean, he said zero, I agree, that it won't have an effect on this project. Okay, the next question is, the state parks, water sound, and sanctuary by the sea have been identified tonight as not being included in the project. Can someone representing the project state definitely tonight that an ECL will not be established nor recorded for these specific areas? Just as a matter of clarity, portions of some of these areas are impeded by, do include a portion of the project, but the federal government is not allowed to put sand on state parks. And as everything else I said tonight, can I state definitively that an ECL will not be put there? I cannot state definitively that an ECL will not be put there. As I've mentioned, there's a lot that goes into determining the ECL. I can say in other similar projects, in other similar projects where we had state parks or long stretches of gaps in projects, ECLs have not been established in those long gaps. And, you know, when I say long, I'm thinking 2,000 feet or so. So, you know, there's, there's, it could be, yes. Next question. When sand is added seaward of the ECL, the land seaward of the ECL will become public beach, therefore effectively taking private property that would have been created by nature. And I think this is referring to the accretion discussion that I, I mentioned earlier, that one of the rights is, that you lose when an ECL is established is accretion. You no longer accrete property. You also gain the surety of not losing property as well. So it is a give and take. And also, you know, back to my statement that your repairing rights are guaranteed by statute, that you maintain those, those repairing rights. If a landowner does not sign waiver and the project adds sand seaward of the ECL, what will be done by the state and the Corps to repair storm damage? I mentioned, and Brad clarified, that it is possible to place sand seaward of the ECL. The Corps has stated they will not do that for this project. So, you know, this question then becomes, you know, if a landowner opts out, what will be done by the state and the Corps to repair storm damage? And, and I'll simply say that just because, you know, a landowner opts out of this project, the beach system is still a concern to the state, and the state will, you know, participate in repairs to storm damage as it would any other area.
Let me ask you about seawalls. There's three conditions. So during the process, would any seawalls be disturbed? You know, we have geo-tubes, and we have all kinds of different structures out there.
In talking with the Corps on this, you know, their, their intention is to, you know, to enhance the dunes and not removing any of the seawalls, to leave them in place.
Okay. And then so...
I spoke for you.
Yeah, correct.
To enhance the dunes and not taking seawalls out, not disturbing seawalls, just place them.
So you'd be putting sand on top of it. And then if somebody wanted to repair their seawall, let's just say that, you know, they wanted to repair it, and there would be two cases. Repair it during an off-season where there's nothing really going on with storm or anything that hadn't been, but they just want to get in there and repair it, would they have the right to do that?
I guess it really depends on where it is. I mean, if it's, if we build a dune on top of it and put several, you know, yards of sand on the top of it, I'm not seeing the point in digging that up. If they do, I feel that might be something the county would have to answer on that.
And I'll, I'll just go back to say, I haven't read the proposed easement, but most construction easement just allows, you know, the Corps, their contractor, to place sand and to clean it up and, and, and leave the site. And it doesn't take anything away from the homeowner. If a seawall then is, then accessible and in need of repair, they maintain all their rights that they have today to repair that seawall.
And then, and then if, if a storm came and someone wanted to add a seawall, they don't have one, the storm came, would they be able to add, put a seawall in? Either way, if they signed the easement or if they didn't sign the easement?
And again, it would be a case-by-case basis. We have rigid requirements by rule and statute. Whether or not we can allow a seawall has to do with whether or not there's a conforming structure or not, whether or not the structure is being, in, in threat of being damaged, and then what other options are available. So we would review it at that time based on the conditions that are present at that time.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's all the questions I have.
Yep. We'll go to the Corps now to answer their questions.
I'm going to sit here if it's okay. Okay. Let's see, the first one I have here is, is the Corps aware that an administrative law judge from the Florida Division of Administrative Hearing has completely rejected Taylor Engineering's sand bleaching study as not scientific in the J.D. East project in 2010? We have on our staff at the, in Mobile District, we have a geologist as well as geotechnical engineers who reviewed all of that data. And when that data was accepted by us and included within the feasibility report and then included in this pre-construction engineering design, that it was reviewed and approved by our staff. The question goes on, is the Corps aware that the same judge rejected Taylor Engineering's color grading of sand because they weren't geologists or qualified? Again, answered it the same way as before, and also that that is the best sand that was available for the project, that met the needs of the project. So I, I think that the, I think that that, we accept, by accepting that, that we've taken ownership of that work performed. What truth checking has the Corps performed on data provided by the county or their consultants? Again, that we have, on our staff, we have the required geotechnical as well as geologists who review any of the documents that we accept. Does the Corps accept it at face value? No. And it really is a thorough process that we go through. We, this project, to get through feasibility, we went through a internal design quality control review. We went through a, what we call an agency technical review, which is where other districts outside of our home district, outside of Mobile District, review the project and look at it. This particular project went through what we call independent external peer review, where we hire, you know, university professors, experts in their field outside of the government to review the project, looked at, who have all reviewed and looked at this project. So no, we did not accept it at face value. It was thoroughly reviewed project. We also, this project was also, we performed a value engineering on the project as well. So there's, how many is it? There's four or five different entities who reviewed it, along with our own staff, along with our own design, geotechnical engineer, and geologist. Okay, the next question is, by agreeing to this easement, this will be a default of my loan agreement. We should require lenders' approval. I can't really address this particularly. I know that our real estate and our office of counsel is aware of the process that we are going through in regards to these easements. We've bought off on that, and they've accepted, uh, that as the path to get the necessary rights of entry to, to do the project. "Will a dune lake outflow opening act like a breach in the levee during a storm, uh, putting upland owners in harm's way?" It would, the, our response is it will not put upland owners in any additional risk than prior to the project. Okay, the next question is, "The new berm will block the view of the bottom deck. What can be done about this?" We reviewed the project and looked at the, the, the dune, uh, which, you know, you have the, the berm, which is, that's your, basically your beach, and then the dune system, which is that 15-foot elevation. And we reviewed the entirety of the project, and we did not find any locations to where it was impacting, uh, the, those views. If, if, I know that we had one homeowner who came back concerned that we had blocked his view. He had an older home, and what we found was that his, he was, his finished floor elevation was at 18-foot. So he was three foot above, and he was in one of the, uh, lower lying areas. "The new berm placement in relation to existing berm from the last project." I'm not sure, we'll have to come back to that. I'm not sure what that means. And then, "What commercial activity will be permitted, uh, when the berm..."
That's us.
Okay.
Commercial activities, ours.
Okay, and then "Who will pay per the walkways over the new berm?" What, we're, okay.
That's us too. Sorry.
No problem.
Not sure, that probably stuck to another one.
You want me to go ahead and finish these?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Our mean high water line is...
You're just reevaluating this.
Okay, uh, we just wanted to go back. It said, uh, "Can you work, uh, can you work landward of the mean high water line without written permission of property owner?" That was something we discussed earlier. The, probably what we should say is that we cannot work meanward how, uh, mean, uh, landward of the mean high water line, uh, without the necessary rights of entry that we require. It's not necessarily the permission of the property owner. The, uh, the, the county does have, uh, within its toolbox, other means to do that. And I'm, I'm not getting into that issue. I'm just saying that it's not necessarily, uh, that we require permission of the property owner in order to do that. That's my understanding, and I'm speaking a little bit about, uh, legal issues, which I hate to do. Okay? And I think that's, um...
Have we addressed this one here? Okay, Brad, you wanna, while they're reviewing this, and that goes to FDEP.
Yeah, I can, I can hit a couple of these real quick, as the ones I asked in the past over. "What commercial activity will be permitted between new berm and the gulf?" All I can go is off of precedent, go is off of precedent. The Board of County Commissioners passed in early 2000s an ordinance that said that all vending on public beaches south of private property has to get the permission of the upland landowner. That ordinance is on the books and has been enforced in Western Walton County and also sections of Eastern Walton County. So, uh, there's no change to that ordinance that I'm aware of. So that would stay underneath the ordinance. The other thing that I would offer, though, is that there is state protection through state statutes, that nothing injurious can be done to owners on that land seaward of the erosion control line. So there may be some legal opportunities there. "Who will pay for walkovers over the new berm?" It will be an owner's responsibility. However, it's not an owner's requirement. The owners are not going to be required by the county to go and extend their boardwalks. It would be highly recommended, it would be beneficial to the project, and it would help it. However, it would be the owner's responsibility for three main reasons. Number one is cost. There would be a cost if the county tried to go in and do every single walkover, an extremely high cost. Second, uh, how do you do aesthetics that is going to please everybody? With people that are very particular in how, what they like their boardwalks made and how they, how long they want them to be and all of that. So you've got the aesthetic issue. And then the third issue I would say is liability. The county built it and then, uh, would not maintain it, how would that be handled in case somebody was injured? People do get injured on our walk, walkovers. I had the pleasure of sitting through two arbitrations while I was an employee here. So liability, aesthetics, and cost are three reasons. So we're looking at the $33 million as the roughly county expenditure on the project.
Then I'll answer a couple while, uh, the Corps and FDEP. "How much money does the BCC currently have in the nourishment account?" As of 30, uh, November, $13,539,545. "If I sign an easement, what can I do to my land upland of the ECL? Plant trees, trim trees, beach walkover, et cetera? Or am I giving up my rights to maintain that land?" No, Florida statute does, I think I've been alluded to probably by a couple of times. Florida statute 161-201 is the applicable, and all the rights that the property owner enjoys today, the property owner will enjoy, uh, subsequent to the establishment of an ECL and the property. There's a question, do, and this is for all the agencies, so I ask everybody to listen up, Corps and FDEP. "Do all agencies agree with all answers given, regardless of who has given the answer? If not, please give specifics." So I agree with the answers everybody gave.
I agree.
I agree.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then there's a, a question on the squeak test. I don't know if, uh, guess we can pass this to the Corps, but I'm not sure the 99 Corps samples were tested for the squeak test, but, uh, you can look at that and see if you can answer that. And now I'll turn it back over to the FDEP, please.
All right, I've got two more questions. The first one is, "Will a change in the ECL impact the coastal construction line?" And so, um, I'm gonna editorialize the, the question a little bit. "Will an establishment of an ECL impact the coastal construction control line?" The answer is no. They're two separate lines, uh, established totally independently of each other. Uh, and the second question is, "We hold riparian rights to launch boats in unobstructed view. The proposed five-foot berm will obstruct view and obstruct boat launching. The 350-foot width sand fill would make it obstruct launching of boats. How do you protect riparian rights?" I think the Corps has, has addressed the, the view issue, that, uh, in their assessment of the project, all the finished floors are above the berm.
As far as I know.
So I think they've, and as far as the, the boat launching, um, yeah, I, I would, I would recommend that you, I mean, I would say you still have the right to loach your, launch your boat, and, um, I, I'm, I'm assuming nobody's backing a trailer over the beach and launching a boat. I could be wrong, but, um, so, so I'm, I'm thinking of, of smaller boats, but I would say work with the Corps on this. You know, if there's something that needs to be addressed, let's work with the Corps and see if it can be addressed. That's, that's how I would recommend you address that issue.
Thank you.
Any question?
No.
No?
Okay.
Uh, DEP, I'm sorry, Corps?
One question, uh, "Do you still maintain that a jointly owned property only requires one owner's signature on easement agreement?" I, I'm sorry, I cannot, I don't know the answer to that. I would, I'd have to check with our, uh, office of counsel. So I, I, I'll have to get back to that. We'll address that, uh, when I get back to the office. "Will ample sands, resources be available for successive renourishments over the 50-year project, uh, cycle?" The answer is yes. In order for us to get the, uh, to get through the feasibility phase, we had to show, uh, that we had adequate sand sources for the entire 50-year project life. "How many feet of actual beach renourishment will occur?" Okay, that's gonna, it's gonna depend a lot on where you are. Basically, uh, we're gonna be adding from zero up to as much as 75-foot of additional beach over what you have. Uh, again, that's gonna vary a lot on where you're located, but, uh, as a rough ballpark figure, you could kind of expect something in that range. "Has the project's, uh, benefit or detriment to accretional uses of the beach been studied?" Uh, we do not look at recrea-, okay, yeah, we, we do not look at recreational. We only do hurricane and storm damage reduction recreational. It's not one of the, uh, uh, it's, it's not a recreational project. I need to put it that way. It isn't, it would, it is not done for recreation. I think someone is asking for exclusions, uh, standards.
Standards and perspectives.
That, that was in the opening question? Uh, if you just go back to the opening questions, the answers are there.
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't elaborated on what standards and what perspective, unless they're questioned. What standards and what perspective elaborated?
Engineering, sustainability. So in other words, any reach that we determined before...
You gotta talk into the mic, sorry, sorry, so that you can be recorded.
We're going to look at, to ensure that the project is structurally sound and sustainable, that it, when we put the sand out, that the coastal, uh, processes won't immediately take it away, the sand. We're gonna look at it environmentally to make sure that it's environmentally sound, which really the whole project is already past that muster, but we'll look at within that particular reach. And then it has to be economically justifiable as well.
And as a question, as part of your standards and perspectives, do you include the fact that 90% do not want the project, want to be included in the beach?
Mr. Hildreth, we've got a specific question. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take...
That is a question.
Well, it's getting editorialized.
Yep. Uh, the next question I have is, "How will the county protect the littoral, uh, rights of upland property owners?" Again, that goes back to Florida statute, uh, 161-201, which, uh, all the rights they have today, they will have, uh, once the ECL or the project is done. And then there's a couple of Corps, there's a couple of other questions here. Uh, there's been about three questions on eminent domain. Uh, I'll read a couple of them. "At a previous BCC meeting, a commissioner said that police powers will not be used in connection with this project as has been done in the earlier project. Does that remain the position of the BCC, and does that include use of the power of eminent domain?" And then the next eminent domain is, "Will the county use eminent domain to acquire property interests needed from landowners to construct the project?" And, uh, I think the other eminent domain question's probably on that card that I just sent over, 'cause it was, there was multiple questions on there. That, that's not a question the staff can answer, or DEP can answer, or, uh, the Corps can answer. Only the Board of County Commissioners in a, in a public hearing could answer. So, uh, they, none of them, uh, I can say, have said that they would use eminent domain. In fact, I heard as exactly was quoted by Mr. Booth that, uh, they wouldn't, and that this is, my understanding of the Corps, federal project, uh, they have to have the right to, to go on to that property, to construct that. "How long will the county wait to receive easements back, once they are mailed out to review or revise the project?" That's up to the Board of County Commissioners. It's, it's the county's project. I know in, um, '06, '07, I think there were three or four mailings, three mailings, uh, and it, it was extended. People are out of the country, people can't be found, uh, people sold property, and new property owners have to be found. I mean, there's a whole host of reasons. I'm not sure there's an exact answer to this question. I think until the Board of County Commissioners gets a sense of, you know, where the project is viable or feasible, uh, or can be constructed or not constructed at all. Uh, next question is, "Aren't we asking people who never visit the beach to subsidize those who live on the beach? Isn't that responsibility of landowners who take risks to live on beach? Won't this beach wealth, won't this be beach welfare for wealthy people?" I think is the Corps answered, "This is a, uh, beach protection, okay? Dune protection, uh, property protection project." That's how they designed it. That's what it's designed to do. As I had a conversation, uh, with one of the folks at the TDC meeting today, um, my experience is the value of the properties in this county are directly tied to the value of those properties along the beach. Uh, I know that was true in Rosemary Beach, and we should do everything to protect that asset, those beaches being the most valuable asset that this county has. I know a lot of folks think that the beaches have come back. Uh, we've got definitive photographic evidence that they haven't come back from pre-opel. Uh, there are dune structures, the width of the beaches are about the same, but the dune structures that have been lost in Opel, uh, '04, '05, and the other storms, uh, are, in some cases, significant. "Will the public have the right to traverse private upland property to reach public beach access in south of the ECL?" No. Clear and simple, no. So I will go back to the DEP. Those are all the cards that I have, so what, you don't have any? Corps? Is there a clarification?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make, uh, I think, uh, another way that we could phrase the, the answer to the question, "Will the public have the right to traverse private upland property to reach public beach areas south of the ECL?" It will be no different after the project than before the project. I think it's very, we need to be very careful that if those rights exist today, those rights continue into the future, just like 161-201. So I don't think, uh, it's gonna depend on what rights exist today to traverse that private property. It could have easements already on top of it, that could be common use properties. There's a lot of things that we do not know. However, this project and the placement of sand on those open private areas will not create new access requirements. And so I just wanna clarify that point.
Okay, Corps?
The, um, question is, "What percentage of beach property, property owners are needed to sign an easement before, uh, the project will go forward? Uh, for example, if only one-half of property owners signs the easement, will the project go forward?" Again, and I, I know that that's not what people wanna hear, but for us, from our perspective, until we see what easements we have and determine, uh, until we see that, we're not able to know what kind of project it will have moving forward. And, uh, so really, I just can't answer that question at this time. Next question, "Will the use, you, uh, you say, US Army Corps Engineers put sand seaward of the mean high water line if the up, upland property owner does not sign an easement?" That goes back to our, uh, construction of, of the template, and the template just is not built around being just seaward of the mean high water line. So in that particular case, to answer that question is no. And then, Richard, did you, let's see?
Yeah, so the next question was, "Who pays to replant the new dunes since all existing vegetation will be covered, and then plant with what?" Uh, the planting of the dune falls under our contract that we're gonna have, uh, through the cost share. The dune will be planted with five different species. At this time, I can't give you the exact species. I know one of them is sea oats, and that's the primary one, uh, but there is four other species so that we do comply with what the FD, FDPE regulations are. The vegetation will be, uh, diverse and covered over with all that, uh, and there will be, uh, a stipulation for the contractor to maintain that vegetation for one year. The next one I had here, "Who determined all, who determined that all water sound structures 600 feet from water, uh, are there condominiums almost on the crest of the Camp Creek?" There are condominiums almost on the Camp Creek downfall, not 600 feet from water, maybe 200 feet of flat sand bar between downfall, water, and gulf?
Again, the project was determined by an economic evaluation, uh, of each, with the beach, uh, the project was divided into reaches, and within, uh, certain reaches, some projects were in and some were out. And so it was that, uh, evaluation that led to, to that from, uh, so the Corps did determine what projects were in and out in terms of the, the federal project.
And I can say the, the 400 feet probably came from me. It was outside the, the project before. Uh, we used the property appraiser's measuring tool on his website, and we also looked it up on Google Maps. Uh, I can almost guarantee you it's not 100 or two, even 200 feet, 'cause it's 200 feet to the seaward side of the downfall almost. So, um, just to chime in on that one. Do you have any more questions to answer?
Yeah, the last question, Brad... Yeah, the last question Brad mentioned over here, the, will you, as a project sponsor, assist that submerged sand from the never-before-used and untested bar area will be tested on dry beach and pass the squeak test? As I said earlier, I'm not a geotechnical engineer. However, I have been involved with the project, and I have not heard of a squeak test, and not aware that one will be performed.
And then I have, just to follow on that one, this is, was an issue that was also raised in the previous beach nourishment project on the western end of the county and the eastern end of Destin, and that was a concern, that would it squeak? And yes, it does. And actually, the Jettie East sand, which we believe to be worse, at least by the geotechnical examination, squeaks also. That goes to the size and shape of the granules. We have one last question over here, and asking what percent, this is the Jettie East project, and the question is, what percentage of shell would you say these pictures have? These owners were told this was 2%. I don't know personally what they were told, and I was on that council when that project was done. I know that the geotechnical data differs because it says it's about 5% or just under 5%, and I know that this is half of that. So I don't know what they were told, so I can't really comment on it. Are there any other question cards over there? Brad, do you have any?
I don't.
Mr. Chairman, that's, we've answered every question that's been submitted to us.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Are there any cards that have not been read that had questions?
Regarding the Corps, about using the federal power of eminent domain.
Oh, yeah.
Answer, yeah, the council.
The questions whether the Corps will use the federal power of eminent domain to acquire interest in the property if landowners refuse to sign easements. And I spoke to the Office of Counsel about this just recently, and I'm trying to use his exact words here. And we're, in this particular case of this project, we'd look to the county to do any of that kind of work. It's not to say that we don't have that ability to do it, but we would look to the county to use the powers that it has to give us the necessary rights of entry into the project.
Sir, did you have a question that was not answered?
Yes, I had, are there primary or secondary dunes behind the new 15-foot dune that may be removed or leveled out because it's behind?
Yeah, and that type of work would fall under our coastal construction control line program. I'm assuming by the proximity to the primary dune, it'd be seaward of the control line. And so then you'd have to get with our project team over there and see if that is an acceptable project and meets our control line rules.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I believe there was another question about, and it may have been answered when I was going through. Will this project, will the establishment of an ECL have any effect on the coastal construction coordination line? Was that question answered?
Yes, sir, I answered that.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Certainly, my thanks to all the people that came here tonight and submitted a lot of really good questions. Mr. Thomason, Newell, and Allen, and Mr. Pickle, thank you very, very much for your comments and input. Mr. Bagby, thank you for coordinating all this. The Board still has to have a public hearing or meeting to determine the easement letter that's gonna go out, and at that time, we will take public comments. But absent anything else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.